Welcome, everyone. My name is Mayor Gonce. I'm calling the public hearing for November 27th, October 27th. The order at 6:30. Actually, maybe it's 6:31 now. But we're calling it to order. We have, it's, the reason for this meeting is a zoning code change application was sent to us from our village planning commission. I'll just wait a few minutes here and continue to go on and say the applicant isn't that. Oh, okay. Another council person. We just have one more to come on in. Mr. Ansel, how are you?
Good. Mayor Gonce, how is everyone else doing?
We're doing well.
Good. Thanks for asking, Ron.
You're welcome.
So let's see who's on the list here. Okay, Marshall's connecting on, all right. So for those who are attending, I just want to say that we have five of the six council members on. You probably can see that. Ron Ansel, Ron Bartko, Janet Miller, and Don Poliak. And there's Heather Davis, our sixth council member. Hello, Heather, how are you? She might be muted yet. Oh, she's still connecting, so. We have that. We also have our village engineer, Brian Gorog. Gorog, I'm sorry. Let me get it correct. And Arthur Schmidt, our zoning inspector, both from OHM Advisors. So they're with us this evening. I had called the meeting to order, the public hearing. And the applicant that we have this evening is Republic, Boston Heights LLC. They had gone before the planning commission and were referred to the council. So let me get to their application sheet here so we can get a little more information from that. They're from Republic is from 1784 Hamilton Road, Oklahoma, Michigan, 48864. They don't have a charter number presented. They don't have any other names that they use. The property that we're here for this evening is 6625 Dean Memorial Parkway. The owner of that is Maplewood Lodging LLC. And I looked on the Summit County website just a couple hours ago, and I confirmed that, yes, Maplewood Lodging is still the owner. The parcel number is 13-01028. And it says on the application here, the applicant's interest in the property has it that he's owner under contract, although on the website it listed Maplewood. So I don't know if Maplewood and Republic are one in the same or not. But we have their zoning district 1160 and 116302A3 are the zoning districts we're dealing with this evening. The acreage it says here is 8.2416 acres. Current use is a vacant motel. Mixed use, multifamily resident and business is the proposed use. And I have included here that they're asking for the rezoning. Statement in support of rezoning. Boston Heights LLC seeks rezoning for the purpose of renovating the existing vacant motel building located at 6625 Dean Memorial Parkway, Boston Heights, Ohio, and the property number everybody gave you. What I, what I want to point out to you this evening is what we are being asked here is to consider rezoning this to a residential usage that is part of the Heinz Hill Road corridor plan. So we have that here. All of you have received this information that was sent out to you from the office here in the last few days. So, Don, I guess at this point, we need to see, is there anyone who's asked a chat?
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to remind all the participants
Okay.
that are, that are here, you have an opportunity to be able to be recognized in the public hearing by using the Q and A button and recognizing yourself. And give me, give us your name and your address so that you can be identified, and then you can ask your questions, and then we'll, we'll bring it into the, the public hearing.
Okay. So.
There, as of right now, it looks like someone is using the chat line.
Okay.
Colin Hooper from Republic would like to be recognized.
Okay.
And if you'd like. All right, I will, Colin. Colin, you are now.
Colin Hooper. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Okay. Great. Well, so, so what we're proposing with the site is, is to repurpose the existing hotel, which I believe has been shut down for somewhere around 10 months, into a mixed-use project featuring between 205 and 210 market rate residential units. Mixed-use components will include office space, co-working studios, and reactivating the restaurant. You know, from our standpoint, we, it's pretty major redevelopment or repurposing of the existing property into, into something that we believe would serve the community well. But the points we want to emphasize are market rate housing, office, and reactivating the restaurant. So that, that's my introduction of the project. You know, I'll hand it back to you if you, if you want to ask any questions, you know, we'll stand by to answer.
Okay, Colin. What I'd like to point out to all the council who's present here and the other attendees, that the Exhibit B that I was sort of going through, and then I thought maybe it'd be better to let Republic present what they were going to do for their introduction. In, in the presentation that was presented to the planning commission, they called the project or the building or whatever, Plato's Cave, Boston Heights, will consist of, it said, 210 studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments, a co-working space, a gym, meditation rooms, yoga rooms, media rooms, micro storage. So now what we're hearing this evening is the restaurant's going to reopen, which wasn't proposed before. The rooms are 205 to 210, very similar. So I guess the questions are, we, we've changed during the planning commission meeting, it was presented that they were looking at maybe 170 rooms. So I'm not sure what the real numbers are. All we can go by is what this submittal shows, and the submittal shows 210 studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments. So that's what we can consider unless, you know, they're planning on telling us that that's going to change, but it's.
No, but I, I assume you can still hear me? Am I still activated?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. No, that, that, that's all correct. The only thing that I would add on to our previous submittal is that we would intend to reactivate the restaurant. But as to the exact apartment count, 200 is a, is our best, you know, is a close approximation right now. The only reason I, I waiver on the exact unit count, 205 to 210, is occasionally you, you lose or add a unit or two as you further develop your architectural plans.
Okay.
For purposes of, of the evaluation tonight, to, but we can move forward with 210.
All right. So as we pointed out, we said that there are two zoning districts that we're talking about this evening that present hotels is located in, and it's section 1160 and 1163.02A3. Neither one of those codes permits residential drawings. It's either permitted or a conditional use. So that is the reason why the applicant has come to us and said they want to change the Does council at this point have any questions on, for me, let's say, as far as looking at the information that's provided from the planning commission?
Mayor, I, I don't have a question, but at the October 13 council meeting was the first reading of this, and it was bypassed so fast that, that we didn't get to discuss this at all. So I, I, I've been going over all this stuff, and I would, I would just like to make my opinion on this, if I can. Ah, the first reading was technically on the 13th of, of October at the council meeting, but we didn't get to discuss it. So.
Okay, Bob. And we'll have that discussion, but right now we should see if there's anyone else from the public that has any comments they would like to make. And so I want to, I want to check with Mr. Poliak to see, is there anyone else who is wanted to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is, Mr. Hinkle, East Boston Mills Road is asking, can the zoning inspector compare the potentially permitted unit density for this parcel at the 12 units per acre versus the applicant's preliminary proposed unit count? That is the question.
Okay. So we can, we're asking that of the zoning inspector, Arthur?
Yes. Yes, I can address that to Mr. Hinkle's question. So within the Heinz Hill overlay district, as I think Mr. Hinkle is bringing up, the permitted unit density for residential within the Heinz Hill overlay is 12 units per acre. So approximately, given the 210 units indicated, and based on the application, we're talking roughly 8.2, 8.3 acres land. So we're talking roughly 25 units per acre for this. So that would be what the applicant's proposal unit count would be.
Which, okay.
Was there a follow-up there, Don? Sorry.
There's not. I'm, I'm marking it as that it was answered live, but obviously, any members of the public can use the Q and A button, just identify yourself to ask any follow-up questions or, or to ask any more questions. Because in, in the council meeting, the, the planning commission has now given it to council to give a determination on, is there merits to this proposal that are compelling to move it to Village Center, Village Center sub-districts? That's, that's the, the question at hand, is that is, is this proposal ultimately compelling to meet the, the demand to potentially double the Village Center sub-district? Okay. There, Mr. Mayor, there is another question, Mr. Mr. Bevan. Mr. Tom Bevan is asking a question, I believe he's over in Ashbrook. Are there plan, and, and a business owner within the village? Are there plans for this development that have been made available to the public is the question?
Okay, I guess I will answer that. There were no plans submitted at the planning commission, and as I said when we started this meeting, we really have nothing beyond what this is unless Colin Hooper is going to, or someone else from Republic is, has something else that they would like to present this evening. But we had a very small site plan that showed the whole building and parking lot and, and Mr. Bevan's building next door to it and that, as it was located on a parcel, and that was it. So we have no real site plan or what any of the building was proposed to look like.
So I'm going to mark that as answered live, Mr. Bevan. If you have a follow-up, please go ahead and put it in the Q and A.
Okay. Let me ask Colin Hooper, are you, are you still on, Colin?
I am. I'm here.
Okay. Were you planning on making any other presentation on behalf of Republic?
At, at this stage, I'm not. As far as plans, we, you know, you've seen the site plan that we have. We have, you know, our, our architects have not developed further plans. And primarily, the reason is we want to evaluate whether there's a path forward for this type of project before we really engage architecture to do, you know, for further drawings. That said, we, you know, we, if there is a path forward, we are able to engage architects fairly quickly. But, you know, that's kind of where we stand on things.
Okay. Well, I wanted to give you that opportunity because, as we said in the public meeting, so we have the applicant. Is there anyone else from your, from Republic who wants to present this evening as a question or anything?
I, I know there will be a couple of Republic members joining shortly. I apologize for their delay. They had a back, back-to-back meeting about this.
Okay.
So, you know, apologies for that. I know we can, we can continue, and hopefully they'll be able to join before we're finished here.
Okay. So from the applicant, at this time, we have no other questions. Do we have any other questions from the audience?
There is Chad McKenney who's using the, the chat, the, the chat. So not sure, Chad, if you're looking to be recognized to speak, just, can you confirm Just type in, I'd like to, okay, Chad McKenney would like to speak.
Okay.
Can I give him the ability to do so? All right, Chad, Mr. McKenney, you, you have the floor.
You're muted, though, Chad. You need to unmute yourself.
Mr. McKenney, you're going to have to unmute yourself.
Chad, it's at the bottom of the screen where it says mute.
Thank you, Bob.
I'm learning, too.
Well.
Mr. McKenney, another option would be for you to use the Q and A or the chat. You can type in your question if you'd like, and we can read it into the, into the public
There, you're on, Chad. Just unmute yourself.
Yeah, I think he's going to type it in, it looks like. Mr. George is saying that the mute is not at the bottom of the screen, and, you know, I mean, different, different devices have, have.
Different things, yeah.
Cool bars in different spots. So, yeah, it is kind of tricky to sometimes find.
Have him try alternate A. Try alternate A.
Mr. McKenney, you were able to use the chat line. Feel free to use the chat line again to type in your question, and we'll go ahead and read it in.
Sometimes on Zoom, the other thing that works is.
There was a link sent to me. Is it, can you hear me now?
There, Mr. McKenney, go ahead.
There you go.
Yeah, there was, somebody sent me an unmute, and I, I'm just representing the, the seller, and I wanted to just make it known kind of what we've done to get this sent, get this property sold. So I think that most of the city council is aware of the, the efforts that my client has taken over a period of many years. And I think you've seen what's happened to the property. Nobody is happy with that, the current status of the property, I'm sure. And I know that they've done a good job with their broker, Mike George, and my client to locate what they think is a really good developer who submitted a really good plan. And I think from our perspective, the city has that. I understand that there's going to be required, you know, some changes with the, where the property is located in the residential that's been requested. But I just, from our perspective, we're trying to make sure that the council knows that if this doesn't go through, we really don't have anything on the line or any plans or ability to really fix up this property, and they're concerned that it's just going to keep going down, the property, which will benefit nobody. So I, I just wanted to put that in and make sure, and I'm sure the council is aware of that, but we don't, there is no magic fix to this if, if the council does not consider, you know, the request of the developer here. And that's all I wanted, wanted known.
Okay.
Mr. McKenney.
Go ahead.
Mr. McKenney, which version of the plan did you read?
The plan that I, that I've heard, the most recent plan that I've heard is the one that was just submitted by the developer that he was talking about.
The site plan or is there another plan?
Nope, that's the plan that I've seen, the one that's been submitted, my understanding for the development that's just been discussed.
The, the application and the site plan?
Correct.
There it is, in an eight-and-a-half by 11 piece of paper, and here's the hotel. I'm not sure what you can tell from that, but that's the only site plan we were given.
And so if there is a, yeah, certainly if there's a request for additional information from the developer, I understand that. My position is that, and the only thing I want known from the seller, is that we're looking for just an understanding from the council. If this, if this doesn't go through, the property's just going to continue, the, the fear is it's going to continue into degradation. So that's, I just wanted that known and considered in this process.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McKenney.
And then if, I don't, I don't have anything else at this point, so I'm just going to mute myself.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McKenney.
Anyone else there, Don, that wants to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it looks like Mr. Mike George would like to speak. Would you like to, can I enable him to be able to do so? Okay, Mr. George, you are also muted. If you would then unmute yourself.
He did.
Okay, thank you, Mr. George. You have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you, everybody, for being here. I appreciate it, we all do. I'm the broker working on this deal, and prior to this current developer, you may remember the previous developer, Tapestry, who came in and submitted very thorough plans, elevations, everything that you would all expect and hope for. I believe they spent upwards of $150,000 on those plans. Turned out, they were not feeling confident after the planning commission vote to move forward the city council because they just didn't feel that they had the support of the council. Since then, and it seems that, that's kind of the reputation the council, the council has, all due respect, is that there's a lot of resistance to developing this parcel. We understand that, that things then may have been a little different. Since then, we've entered into the age of COVID, right? And in, in this environment, I'm in commercial real estate brokerage, we're not seeing any development besides multifamily development currently. So you're going to see no one come in to knock down, raise the site, and invest a lot of money in a land deal and then build something new, especially in, say, retail, it's going on, office, we don't know what's going to happen with office. Things are going into bankruptcy. There's a lot of, there's a lot of banks that I'm talking to, they're getting hotels back, handed to them by their owners. So it's, it's a, it's a weird time, right? I think we all, we all know that, as we're on Zoom here instead of in person. But I just wanted to mention that because the current developer, smartly, decided to hold off on investing the many, many thousands of dollars in developing, developing these plans until they know that they have support from, from the city council. Once they do, you will have not only plans submitted, but you will have the developer working with you and developing plans that you like and that you support and that you want to see in your community and that you're proud of. So I just wanted to step on and mention that, that, that we had a previous deal for a million dollars more to the seller than this deal, that I think was an amazing reuse of, of the property. Now we have a new developer, one of the only developers left out there doing work in this day and age, that is ready to invest many, many millions of dollars in raising parts of the facility and, and improving other parts that are able to be maintained. And, and he's going to put a product in there that satisfies your requirements for this zoning change to fit that Heinz Hill overlay district that would have a mixed-use development. So you'll have not only multifamily, which would, which it may be possible that they decide to move towards a, a, a community demographic that you're comfortable with. We talked about the possibility of a 55 and older, but I can't speak for certain to that. But they will have retail components that nobody's building. They're talking about bringing in office work sharing space like WeWork, right? Where people in the community can go and rent space and utilize office space in an environment away from their home. They're talking about having a gym, a membership gym, where people can go and, and purchase a membership and work out. So, and they're, and now they're talking about the possibility of even bringing the restaurant back. So you'll have a new, a, a new restaurant in the area. So there's a lot of exciting things in an area, in an era of COVID where nothing else is happening. So I just wanted to mention that. I know you all have your, your concerns. It's your community. I know that bringing in multifamily to a community can sometimes be a concern, but know that this is a, a market rate development, right? This is not one that's going to be servicing people that can't afford a high rent. These are going to be market rents, and your community demands a high rent and a high-quality individual. Certainly, in my community, and many communities you see all over the country, you're seeing a lot of luxury apartments being built in communities to help engage the young millennials that don't want to buy homes. Those millennials, in a few years, are going to want to buy a home. So it makes a lot of sense. I think that you should give this a lot of thought and consider, consider that the developer will provide those plans, that he will work with you, they will work with you to make sure the plans are to your satisfaction, that will benefit the community and the seller, and that you won't have an eyesore to look at for the next 10 years until something else comes along. And I say 10 years because that's the amount of time that we're estimating in commercial real estate it could take to develop a new plot of land. So anyways, that's all I wanted to mention. I don't know if you have questions for me, but that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. George.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions from the audience?
Give me one second here. Mr. Rubin, you have a hand up. Could you either use the chat room or go to the Q and A and just say, I'd like to speak? Or am I assuming that the hand? Or am I assuming that the hand up is, is a request to speak? I just, if I can get some.
Yeah, he wants to speak.
Okay. All right. And then just Mr. Mayor too. Mr. Bevan has put, put out a comment, but I want to recognize that he's, he's asked, how can the village guarantee that the project will be high quality and market rate? Is Mr. Bevan's question?
And this is the question to the developer?
Uh, it, it didn't specify that.
Okay. Cause I'm not sure how we could, you know.
With what's, with what, with what's been presented.
Right.
You might want to mention that, Mr. Mayor.
Well, as you said, Mr. Bevan, what's been presented to us here gives us no indication. And the one thing I, I do recall, and I don't have the verbatim transcrip here in front of me, but at the planning commission meeting, Mr. Rubin stated that he was going to do this project as.
Maybe, do you want me to recognize Mr. Rubin? Can I rec, can I recognize Mr. Rubin and, and allow him to be able to speak, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Mr. Rubin, you have the floor, but I believe you're also muted. So if you take yourself off mute, you're, you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Poliak, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mike George mentioned a lot of what I was going to say. You know, we, we just, you know, would respectfully beseech you, you good folks to, you know, to, to, to consider very seriously the, the fact that we are developers who are creating a product that, I mean, to answer the question of Mr. Bevan's, what guarantee is there that these are going to be market rate units? Well, we're not using any federal subsidized programs, which would generally necessitate what is known as uppercase affordable housing. So generally there are very few developers on earth, and I'm not saying that facetiously at all, but just you would not be creating affordable housing units, capital A affordable housing units, unless one is utilizing the aid of a federal program, low income housing tax credits, similar taking section eight vouchers. It would be tantamount to financial suicide to spend market related uh, uh, upgrade costs and then rent an apartment for below market rate rates, because there's only one way you're going to make a larger fortune into a much smaller one is to do that. So if I've understood the question correctly, it would behoove us, you know, if we are capitalists and we, we most certainly are, but we are capitalists, you know, who have our hearts in the right place. I just can't, again, and it's, it's difficult because we are from outside the community. We are doing quite a bit of work in the state of Ohio at the moment. And what's similar about your overlay district is that a lot of these have been promulgated, in fact, every single one that we've come across in a pre-COVID environment. And I'm sure all of us have got, you know, are, are reading the same and consuming the same media and looking at the same statistics. And I'd like to just give some of those to you good folks on, on, on the call today. They are speaking of between 20 and 30,000 hotels closing down across the country. This hotel was already closed down pre-COVID. So the chances of a flag coming along, in other words, a pick a flag, Hyatt, Ramada, Days Inn, any of the brands around the country on their white donkey outside the gates of Jerusalem is absolutely, it's, it's less than zero, that that's the likelihood of that occurring. The likelihood of a retailer coming along when there is what's known as the retail apocalypse is basically even lower than the possibility of a, of a hospitality flag coming through. And the likelihood of a commercial office redevelopment being done there, when you're looking at most of the large employers around the country are speaking of a work from home to 2021, 2022. Think about the carnage that's actually going to exist, not only in the commercial real estate market, but what the knock-on effect is actually going to be within the debt capital markets. So it really is a choice, of course, if there are other developers out there where you, where you good, good folks believe are going to be understanding your overlay district more, you know, we, we're not sure whether or not there's a concern that in putting in some level of multifamily, you believe that your public school system is going to be proliferated with a bunch of folks, there's always, you know, there's always a a, a, an element of these things when you're putting in more housing units into any community. I'm not sure that the number of housing units that we do, given the fact that most of the folks are going to be singles and, and younger folks without kids, just based on the type of unit configurations that we have would have that effect. But, you know, I'm just not sure what the alternatives are for, for the village. I really respectfully would like to point to some of the macro factors. If your overlay district was created in the last 10 months, I would respectfully, you know, reserve, reserve my opinion, but it wasn't. And no one foresaw a global pandemic doing what, what things are doing at the moment. And the world has changed. We're living in an environment, as Mike said, we're talking to each other remotely. We're credible people. We're easily referenceable, whether it be myself in doing this work internationally, whether it be my partner, Chris Potepin and his family out of Michigan. You know, we're credible people with good bona fides. And of course, as Mike correctly pointed out, we were forewarned that this was going to be a challenge coming in here. We have done a lot more work in, in towns and villages where we've been more, you know, but with, with respect, when you have the mayor and, and I think it was Councilmember Poliak voting against us in the initial, what chance do we actually have to actually get this thing done when you've got the mayor of a village voting against you? It's just, it's, it's pretty obvious, but I can tell you for free that I would take a non-manetary or take a monetary bet to a charity of anyone's choice, that if we fall away, this property will not be developed within the next three years by any other developer. That I will, I will, I will donate a thousand dollars to anyone's charity if that is the case. So that, I'm not saying that facetiously. Any charity of your choice, if that property gets redeveloped within the next three years, if we, if we fall away. And that's really what I wanted to say about that. We appreciate everyone's time. We haven't given you a lot to go with, but I can guarantee you, if we given a positive response, the same type of detail that we've gone in on any one of these other deals that we're turning around hotels around the country, you'll, you'll have more than enough information to go by to see the look and feel, the quality and what we intend doing. But I have a sneaking suspicion that if you don't go with us, I don't believe there are too many folks in the wings. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. All right, Mr. Poliak, is that, are there any other audience?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Henkel has said, can the zoning inspector or Mr. Gonsi or Mr. Poliak characterize the view that the planning commission had when passing this on to council? Was it an endorsement of multi-unit residential or a mixed commercial use? Or rather a deferral of development policy for this property for, for council to decide? I'd be happy to take that one.
Okay.
It's, it's my belief that it was a deferral for development policy for this property for council to decide, Mr. Henkel. That is my, that was my perception from, from, from what happened at the planning commission.
Mr. Poliak, I would, I would agree with that. That was my perception as well of the characterization that it was a deferral development policy.
And I, I would agree with that, but as I said, being the mayor, and as Mr. Rubin pointed out, you know, the mayor, I, I do sit on the planning commission and I do have a seat there. So I do have a, a right to a voice of opinion and, and I did. So that was the thing because what was being presented was not something necessarily that met what our guidelines were. So. All right. That being said, do we have anyone else who has a comment?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm not seeing anything in the chat. And I am not seeing anything in the Q and A at this moment.
Okay. Is there anyone on council that has any questions?
Am I out of order?
No, you're on council. I mean, you're.
I'm on council, so I have my opinion. At the October 13th council meeting, we didn't talk about this. This was the first reading, so I didn't get to talk about it, but way back in two six, 2016, when the Heinz Hill Overlay was, was voted on, I was, I was definitely against it. I'll say that. All right. This is my opinion. And, and, and this is what I'm reading from, from the, from the Heinz Hill Overlay. The per 1163.01 is the purpose and intent of the Heinz Hill Overlay was established to create standards to enhance the development pattern within the village and create a unique excuse pedestrian oriented development area. And, and that's what council voted on. And, and that went into effect. Uh, this, this property is located in the Heinz Hill Overlay, and I understand that. And going on, on my notes from what Mr. Rubin said, he said that he would donate a thousand dollars to a charity if, if this would be developed within three years. And I appreciate that. But, uh, back in January, back in January, like, like they said, is uh, I'm reading from a newspaper, uh, uh, Crown Property Holdings bid on this property. And, and back, it, it's only in January of this year. I realize that it's not now October of this year, but he, this is the second developer to bid on this property in a year. And, and going back to that, uh, uh, development in January and, and talking about the planning commission, I, I'm quoting from the newspaper. I got a newspaper print right here. It says, John Codrea, Chair of the Planning Commission, said that he felt proposed rezoning to a planned unit development amounted to spot zoning, which he noted the village is trying to avoid doing. And, and I believe that that's what's happening now is, is way back when the Heinz Hill Overlay was committed to the village, uh, certain ideas of the, of how the village would be developed was laid down by the council. And I believe that by doing this, to use the words of John Codrea, this is spot zoning. And whatever a developer comes up with, then, uh, uh, the village jumps at it. I, I, I don't believe they should. I believe that they made a commitment to the Heinz Hill Overlay and they should stick to that. That's my opinion.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Bob. Is there anyone else on council who has any comments to make on this? If not, how about our zoning inspector?
Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. So just very quickly, you know, I understand that obviously we're going through some pretty unprecedented conditions right now with everything going on related to the pandemic. And so, you know, right now the effects of those conditions are still ongoing and probably will still be ongoing as we look towards the future. So really looking at the market and getting a full understanding of it, it, you know, without having something being done professionally and looking at our area in particular, it's hard to really recognize what type of effect this is going to have as we look, as we're looking towards the future. So just based on what we've seen to date, understanding the application as it is, just with the site plan, understanding what we have with respect to the design guidelines that are in place for, for this overlay district, understanding the proposed density that is being suggested for this project. It's, it's hard based on what we've seen, what I've seen to date and what we've seen on date to recommend a zoning change at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Smith. Hi, is there anyone else who has a comment?
Yep, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Bevan has made a comment on the Q and A and he said that I will donate $10,000 to a charity if this property is redeveloped in the next three years. This should be construed as an endorsement of the current proposal.
Okay. All right.
I have a question.
That, oh, this should not be construed as an endorsement of the current proposal. If I misread that, my apologies. Let me just reread this. I want to make sure that it's absolutely clear. Mr. Bevan's comment, I will donate $10,000 to charity if this property is redeveloped in the next three years. This should not be construed as an endorsement of the current proposal.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bevan.
Can I make a comment or ask a question?
Yes, Mrs. Miller.
Do I have the, do I have the screen?
Yes.
Uh, I was just going to ask the development company or the broker if they could give us some other examples of places that they have redeveloped. I think that would be interesting because I think they, I, I believe that that was something that they had, they said that they had been, that they had done before. They had other projects that they had done before. And I think that would, I would, I would just think that would be advantageous to us if they could give us some examples of other places.
Mr. Mayor, you have, Mr. George has said, I do. And another comment of sure. And I'm, I'm assuming that if you would allow me to recognize him, he would answer, Mrs. Miller.
Okay. One of these is actually from the developer who wants to speak.
Do you, all right, do you want me to recognize Mr. Rubin or Mr. George?
Well, I think Mr. Rubin, she's asking the question of the developer.
Okay. Mr. Rubin.
Mr. George is the, the real estate agent, as I believe, so.
Okay, Mr. Rubin, you are back on. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Poliak. And thank you, Mr. Miller, for your, your question. The brand that we'll be extending to here is a brand called Plato's Cave. A, a good example of that is a 423 key Days Inn, which had been vacant for 10 years in Branson, Missouri. Converted that into 241 apartments with a clubhouse. And it was the first of its kind in the region. My previous experience, personally, I've been doing adaptive reuse since 2004 overseas. I can give you the details of several projects there. Then we've got the PK Housing. And now just to understand, the developer is Republic LLC, spelt a very strange way, R E P V B L I K. And that is a jointly held company between myself personally and. And that is a jointly-held company between myself personally and Chris Potepin's family-owned business, PK Housing, out of Michigan. PK has converted every sort of asset, from schools into mixed-use precincts. I'm not sure if Chris is, is, is on the line, but we could actually, you know, expose you to a number of, of those deals nationally, but mainly within the Michigan area. Currently, we are buying the, a, a, a building in Columbus at the moment, a very large, which was known for its indoor water park, which we're converting into a mixed-use precinct currently. And we're doing the same thing in Topeka, Kansas, in Sterling Heights, Michigan, in Sheffield, Alabama. So we're pretty busy with this particular business case at present. And we could make a lot of that material available to you good folks, should, should we go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Is that answer your question, Janet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rubin.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Because we are past our, our deadline here, but that's, you know, it's a public hearing, so we want to get all the questions answered. All right, anyone else on council?
No, but you have another one. Mr. Bevin has said, I apologize for sounding sarcastic with my last comment. My point is that we're certainly looking at years before this property is redeveloped. I agree with the assessment of the potential for retail hotel and office development at this site. I don't know enough about the current project to support or oppose it. I do wish the village would act with a greater sense of urgency when viewing proposals for this project. Mr. Bevin, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right. Anyone else in the public or on the council has questions?
At this point, I am not seeing any others, and I'm assuming that Mr. George was piping up, he was volunteering himself for time to answer Mrs. Miller, which was answered by Mr. Rubin. So at this, at this point, I'm not seeing anything else in the chat line or in the Q and A or anybody raising their hand in the public.
Okay. So it is 7:23. At this point, I.
Mr. Mayor, although Mr. George did have a comment, he's, he's, he's put in the Q and A to be able to do so, maybe it had something to do differently.
Okay.
All right. I will go ahead and give him. Mr. Rubin, you have the floor.
Mr. George has the.
Mr. George, I'm, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
No problem, Don. Am I able to answer, to expand on Janet's question a little more briefly?
The floor is yours.
Okay. So just to explain a little more about the development process, I, I normally sell hotels, okay, and land deals for development. And, and there, what, what we're seeing is that since COVID, all hotel acquisitions has really dried up completely. The only activity in the marketplace is our people, groups trying to buy hotel properties at 20 cents on the dollar, and, and Richard Rubin and his firm and other firms developing multifamily properties. That's, that's all we're seeing. I just wanted to mention that, that everything else has come to a screeching halt. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. George. All right. If there are no other questions then, Don, I'm saying that we're going to close the public hearing at 7:25 now it is. And to close, and we're going to go ahead and take a minute to revive ourselves, and we're going to start the council meeting.